The first item on our agenda is Item B. Open time for the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, moving on to Item C. Recognitions by the superintendent.
Dr. Pedrinho.
Well, I would like to introduce Nora Morris. Nora's a senior for, at the high school. She's the class, I believe, treasurer and secretary for the Leo Club. And you're also the president of No Place For Hate, which has been around in Gardner Public Schools for about four years now, would you say, right? So, we welcome Nora as the student representative.
Welcome.
I'll just throw out there that I sat in that seat when I was a senior in high school, so it's a good seat to be in. Looking forward to seeing what you do next. And it's really neat that Massachusetts requires by law that we have a student on the school committee to get that student perspective, and I think it's really important. So, welcome aboard and happy to have you with us.
Thank you.
Item D, the consent agenda. This was included in your packet with information. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, second by Ms. Boardley, to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Item E, Subcommittee Reports, beginning with the Finance Subcommittee. Mr. LaFrenier.
Thank you. The Subcommittee met on October 9th. The Committee reviewed the expense report. General questions were asked and answered with various line items. Mr. Hock noted that the Gardner High School substitute line was already in the negative. You know, Ms. Palavan asked about the deficit and if there was any specific reason. And basically, there was a maternity leave, I believe, and there was two other leave, I think.
Sick.
There was sick. So, there was just a lot of needed coverage there. And not only that, we probably had it, not enough on that line item for the budget, and we will be increasing that next time around. When we do the budget, we'll increase that line and make it more realistic. But I think that's going to level off, I think, soon, once the maternity leave's over and a few others that were sick are back. Let's see. Mr. Hock noted movement in positions since the budget was created. And Ms. Vickery moves the funds and salary lines to reflect the movements. Again, that'll show negatives in one spot already, and so we end up moving the money around as those positions get moved around. Mr. Hock noted that the ELL teacher line was negative, but we are charging $20,000 plus each month to the $104 a day immigrant funding from the state. This line item should become a positive in about three months. And let's see. Also, Mr. Hock noted that the new fence at Watkins Field is near the facility shed, the field, the fence near the facility shed was installed and included a gate for the facility's vehicles. That was completed. And also, the Gardner High School HVAC project is nearly to the end, at the end, and we're waiting on the fabrication and installation of a catwalk. And then a few punch list items before returning in the summer for the final electrical work. And that was it.
Thank you very much. If any questions, comments, concerns in that report from the Finance Subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to the Policy Subcommittee. Ms. Hurst.
We met on September 11th. We had several policies that were just marked as reviewed. We had six tonight for first reading and eleven for second reading.
Those policies will be on the agenda coming up shortly. Is there any questions, comments, concerns for that report from the Policy Subcommittee? Chair, moving on to Item F, Student Advisory Board. Nora, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Our September Well Cup winners were Erica Lenciani, Leona Hudson, and Allison Clark. They were chosen for representing our core values, which are community appreciation, responsibility, and excellence. The juniors and seniors are tied for the best monthly attendance for September, and all the students were awarded a prize. Our early college program is off to a great start with 98 juniors and seniors participating in the program. We also have 20 students participating in the new MVP program with Monty Tech, which is going very well. 10 students are in the carpentry program, and 10 students are in the electrical program. Students go to Monty Tech for their vocation weeks and take their academic classes with us. We're also having 15 students take, taking automotive classes at Mount O'Chusis Community College. And the eighth grade orientation on September 28th went very well with a large turnout. Eighth grade students were welcomed into the high school and were able to get some great information to start off the year, and they got to meet with their teachers and also got tours of the building. We held our annual open house on September 17th to a small crowd, then smaller crowd than usual, but families did get to attend and were able to meet their students, teachers, and check out all the great stuff Gardner has to offer. And on September 18th, we held our annual safety assembly for all our students, which, with our Gardner Police Department, students were able, were presented with the information Run, Hide, Fight. A safety drill will be scheduled at some point during the school year for practice. The all-city band night was held on September 27th at a very full Watkins Field to a large crowd of spectators. Our fall athletic program is off to a great start again this year. The fall teams are working very hard, winning games and meeting, and meets, and representing the high school well. The new GHS cellphone policy is going extremely well. Students have been turning in their cellphones at the start of class and are able to focus on their academics better. And the teachers have also been doing a great job supporting this initiative, and from my perspective, it's been going well. At first, it was a little tricky because everyone had to turn in their phones, and we weren't really used to that. But over time, you know, it's just become second nature, which I think if we keep implementing this policy, it should be. So, that is all.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns for Ms. Morris? All right. Thank you very much. Looking forward to your reports from here on out. Moving on to the next item in our agenda, Item G, New Business. Item number 3642, Policies For First Reading. These are included in your packet for information for vote at the next meeting. Policy JICA, Student Dress Code, JJD Athletic Policy, JJF Student Activities Account, JJIF Head Injuries And Concussions in Extracurricular Athletic Activities, JK Student Conduct, and JKAA Physical Restraint Policies And Procedures. These are for information this meeting and voted on at the next meeting. Correct, Ms. Hurst? Next, Item Number 3643, Second Reading Of Policies. Policy AC Non-Discrimination Policy, BHE The Use Of Electronic Messaging By School Committee Members, EHAA District Security Relating To Technology, EHB Data And Records Retention, GBEE Personnel Use Of Technology, IJNDB Acceptable Use Of Technology, IJOA/E Field Trip Approval Form, IJNDD Policy On Staff Use Of Social Media, JIH Searches And Interrogations, KDCB District Wide And Social, District Website And Social Media, KDD News Media Relations News Releases. Mrs. Hurst.
Out of all those ones that you've just read so eloquently.
Thank you.
We have six that are for adoption, so I'm going to do that in two separate motions. We have EHAA District Security Relating To Technology, EHB Data And Records Retention, GBEE Personal Use Of Technology, IJNDD Policy On Staff Use Of Social Media, KDCB District Website And Social Media, KDD News Media Relationship News Releases. So, I make a motion that we adopt those six policies.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, second by Attorney Palavan to adopt these policies. These are new policies that are not being amended. These are new. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Hurst.
Then, for a second meeting, we have AC Non-Discrimination Policy, BHE Use Of Electronic Messaging By School Committee Members, IJNDB Acceptable Use Of Technology, IJOA-E Field Trip Approval Form, and JIH Searches And Interrogations. I make a motion that, to approve these five policies as brought forth by the committee.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, second by Ms. Boardley, to adopt these policies as amended and presented in the packet. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Item Number 3644, Superintendent Goals. Attorney Palavan.
I'll make a motion to approve the goals as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, second by Ms. LaFrenier, to approve the superintendent's goals as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I just wanted to note that the superintendent had gone over them last meeting, so we're just voting on them tonight.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? The information was presented last meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Item Number 3645, District Improvement Plan.
Actually, Dr. Gogan went over this last time as well. This is in your packet. Again, continuing a lot of the work we're doing, focused on rigor in the classroom, really structuring common planning time to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our students' learning, but also being very supportive in the classroom, having focused on our MTSS for both social-emotional learning behaviors and academics. So, that's pretty much what our plan is, and it's still going in the, I believe, right direction. Our outcomes seem to be getting better each year.
I'll make a motion to approve the improvement plan.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, second by Ms. Hurst, to approve the district improvement plan as presented at a previous meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'll second that.
It's already been seconded, so.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Item Number 3646, Curriculum Coordinator Update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Item Number 3647, Director Of Multilingual Learners. This update was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion on that update?
Just that the numbers are, I'm not saying staggering in a bad way, but the increase, I think, just in the last 90 days of the number of students, and just kudos to the team, the ELL team in the district, for keeping up with it and for keeping these kids serviced.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Thank you, Dr. Simpson. Item Number 3648, Grant Administrators Update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on this update? Thank you, Director Dunn. Item Number 3649, Special Education Update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on this update? Thank you, Director West. Item Number 3650, Special Education Parents Advisory Council Update. This was included in your packet for information. Mrs. Hurst, do you have any?
It was in Ms. West's report.
Oh, it was in Ms. West's, it was included in Ms. West's report. You are right. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on this update?
I was just going to note, just to reiterate it, that there's, the first meeting is being held Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 virtually. So, just a reminder to folks.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to Item H, Communications. Dr. Pedrinho.
Just a few things that I want to mention. I'm really excited. We had our Welcome Back Events, which are somewhat new. We had open houses before, but now we also have the Welcome Back Events before school starts for many of the schools, and it went really well. Very well attended, very good feedback from parents and, as well as staff. So, I was really excited to have that kickoff. Well, I think we're going to do some tweaks. As Nora had mentioned, the high school had low attendance, so I think they're going to try to figure out how they're going to do something differently to make sure we're reaching our families. Also, I want to mention, we just, I say we, Director West, Amber Casan, who's our director of MTSS, and I went to Chicago. We were asked to go to Chicago to speak again and a few of our, put on a few workshops at the International Conference on PBIS, and it was just phenomenal. Some of the things that we took back were great, but honestly, being able to speak and to network with some of these things, we really got some, made some great connections and really showed what Gardner's all about. I have to say, Amber did a session on Friday, which was the last day of the conference, the last session of the conference, and it was packed. All the seats were taken, there was standing room only, and it's just, it's just a really great conference for us to go to, but it's wonderful to be invited and recognized each year for the work that we're doing here in Gardner, and it's an international conference. Also, I'm thrilled at the high school and the middle school with the, in the alternative school with the cellphone policies. It really comes down to, you know, teachers really supporting kids and making sure they're focused on this. That's what makes this work. And then administrators who back up the teachers, starting out the year like that was just a phenomenal, just phenomenal. Parents have been on board wholeheartedly with this, because I think we all recognize the distraction that cellphones cause, sometimes even in school committee meetings. But I think it's really, I think this has been a great policy, and it's really dropped the numbers of office discipline referrals at the high school. They're down 75% since, compared with last year at this time. So, it's, things are going very well there. And again, just to focus on curriculum, you know, walking, we've already done some walkthroughs of common planning times, and of course, we're going in classrooms, and some of the things that we've implemented are already taking hold. Our teachers are working really hard in those common planning times to plan, and then they're implementing it in the classrooms, so we're already seeing things improve. So, we're very excited about this year, and I'm just really excited. Sports went off really well. The, the.
Homecoming?
Homecoming. I was going to say open house, I, open house, I'm going to get out of my head. The homecoming went really well, and I'm just really thrilled with the start of the whole school year. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to Item I, Final Comments Of The School Committee. Ms. Boardley.
Thanks. Just to echo on the cellphone policy, as a teacher and the parent of an eighth grader, thank you so much. Principals, teachers, if you're hearing this, and students for cooperating and taking this seriously. It is, it's just, it's, I'm not going to get on a soapbox about it. I teach high school, so that's all. But I have kind of a bigger thing that I wanted to bring to the comments for today, and it's concerning Question Two, which is coming up on November 5th, up for a vote, and this is to remove MCAS as a graduation requirement for Massachusetts students. And there's, there's so much information out there, and I'm just saying this because the more you say it, the more people know, but these are downstairs in City Hall. If you want one, it has the full proposal for it. So, if you haven't gotten one of these in the mail, people, I don't know where the cameras are, but if you haven't got one of these, get one. Make sure you're informed about this, because this is going to deeply affect education in Massachusetts if it passes. I wanted to, I could, I could sit here and like regurgitate the statistics and stuff, but I wanted to share something a little more personal. As I mentioned, I do teach high school. I'm currently an academic coach right now at Sizer School in Fitchburg, and this was my fir, these past two years have been, has been my first time teaching high school since I was 22, which is a minute ago. And so, we're going to call this student Samantha, because that's my sister's name, just letting you know. No real names are being used here. But this is a real story about a student who is being impacted by this right now. Samantha is a junior now. Samantha took the physics, ELA, and geometry MCAS last year, and in the middle of this past September, she found out that she did not pass the ELA and the math MCAS. What she now has to do is suspend all of her work in her current math and ELA classes, just, this is the way we're having to do it right now, to get tutored in a subject that they haven't done since May, June-ish, as far as geometry. And for ELA, the retake is November 6th. So, the student found out that they did not pass a graduation requirement test, and they have to retake it November 6th with, in addition to trying to manage their other classes for their junior year. In addition, they have to retake the geometry MCAS in April, I believe. I think it's in April, almost a full year after they've taken the course. So, they have to suspend what they're doing, I think they're in calculus right now, actually, because of the test. And if they don't pass it this junior year, they have to retake it their senior year. And if they don't pass it their senior year, it doesn't matter whether or not they have gotten all As, if they have completed their coursework, their GPAs, they will not get a diploma because of the test. The MCAS is, it has value as a piece of the puzzle, and I think that any, I mean, we talk about data here. We use data to make informed decisions as a school committee and as teachers, but it cannot be, and again, this is my opinion as a teacher, it cannot be the only factor in our students moving forward with their lives. And that's, again, this is opinion. I, if you are not informed about this, or if you haven't really looked at it and you have children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and stuff who are going to be affected by this, just take a look at it. Make sure that you know what you're, what you might be voting for going in. And like I said, like the main, the big points is truly, a student's GPA, teacher assessments, and coursework alone will not allow the student to graduate if they don't pass these tests. If we replace the MCAS with something more comprehensive that takes these things into account, if we really lean into the frameworks and the standards that Massachusetts already has in place that are really wonderful, we are, we are in the top of the nation for a reason. We are, I think we are the most, at the top in the nation. If we can do that and we can really start to, begin to regain trust in the communities and in the schools and in the work that we're doing together, the students are, it's going to be less stressful for them, but it's also going to be better for them, because they're going to have a cum, cumulative, right? Yeah, cumulative look at their success, rather than just, if you don't pass this one test, you don't, you don't graduate. So, that's, that's my little, my little soapbox moment. And I want to thank David Thibault Munoz, right? I said it right? Okay. And he shall, his daughter Shell, for coming. David has been working on the Vote Yes On Two campaign, and I am very thankful that you took the time to speak with me and Shell as well, to get me a little more informed and to kind of give me a little bit of the courage to get up here too and kind of speak my mind. So, thank you. Get informed and vote for everything on November 5th. But that's my spiel. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Boardley. Camera's right there.
Thank you. All right. South people, thanks. Thanks.
Mrs. Hurst.
I just wanted to thank Nora for coming on board here. I think it's really important for, you know, the student, and for them to have a voice and for us to hear what they have to say and what's important to them, and I really appreciate her taking the time to be here.
Thank you. Attorney Palavan.
I just wanted to mention in regards to the cellphone policy, that it's not just in Gardner, that this is being implemented. I believe probably almost every district across the state has tried in some form to do something this year, because I think all the data just points to the fact that it is, it's causing a lot of disruption, and I think from what I heard from my son, is the first week of school was a little rough, but then after that, the kids just started to realize what they needed to do and start, you know, the expectation was set, and this is what they have to do, and I think it's a good idea, and I think it also helps to allow the kids to separate from their phone and be okay with that, because I think we all get a little too attached to our devices at times. And I also want to thank Nora. Thank you for coming and presenting tonight, and welcome.
Thank you.
Nora, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just a little bit about the phone policy. I think everyone, what everyone said was very accurate and very true. This is really the only way that we can really like get our education straight and have everyone doing the best to their ability without that distraction, because last year I was a teacher assistant for eighth grade, and I know how hard it was really telling people, please put your phone down, and then they'd be like, oh, just help me do my work. But this year, I'm also going to be continuing with that, and I'm really excited to see how it is compared to last year when we did have our phones and it was like a choice. Obviously, teachers told us to put away, but some students chose not to. But this year, when we have the rule implemented, to see how the students are the difference. I'm really observant, and I love to just notice those differences. And yeah, also, my old school that I was at before I moved to Gardner is also doing the phone policy with collecting the phones before class and then giving it after class, and I've been hearing a lot of stuff, so it's really cool to compare and contrast on what's happening in our district and what's happening in the other side of Massachusetts. So, it's so nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz.
November 5th is coming. It's going to be a close race. Everybody needs to vote. Every vote counts. I've heard stories, a lot of stories about, I'm not going to get involved, I don't like either one of them, but you got to vote. If you don't vote, you don't have a say on the outcome. Early voting starts the 19th of the month through to November 1st. Everyone received a mail-in application. If you don't want to vote in person, vote by mail. It's important that everybody votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaFrenier.
I just want to welcome Nora. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Garber.
I wanted to welcome Nora as well. It's one of my favorite parts of being on school committee is getting to know the students every year. I really appreciate you taking your time. I know you're very busy with all your activities, but it's nice to see you here, and I look forward to getting to know you through the year. I know everybody else has touched on the cellphone policy, but I just wanted to reiterate that as well. Having a child at the high school, I know how hard it is and how distracting it is to have that phone. I also know as a parent how easy it was to text her whenever I thought of something I wanted to say, and it's reworked my mind of, oh, no, we can wait till 2:35 to say that. But I also want to commend the staff and the admin and the teachers and everybody for taking on that task, because I'm sure it was daunting to have to deal with students and parents who maybe weren't as happy with it. But to put everybody on the same level of concentration, I think, is very important, and it's a distraction they don't need to have during the day.
Thank you. I just, again, Nora, welcome to the school committee. Looking forward to having you with us throughout the course of the year. I guess, congrats to the cats all around with the sports teams and how we've been doing across the board with, you know, I mean, I was at the homecoming game with a couple of the city officials and was blown away by the, not just the people in the crowd or the team's performance, which were both great, but the amount of spirit that was in the stands too. It was just, it's neat to see the school culture being as positive in a way as it is and seeing how that's carried throughout, just not the high school at that one event, but all the times I've visited the other schools that have been there. So, thank you to our teachers, staff, administration, everyone who's been involved in making that happen. It's great to see City Hall connected with the schools again with the homecoming dance that was here this past week with, I haven't seen peri auditorium that full, I think, ever, so that was. ever, so that was great to see that many students involved. And we'll have the fall play here at Perry Auditorium in a couple of weeks too for the high school, so, because the auditorium's still under renovation, so if you're looking for the fall play, it's at this auditorium. Don't go to the high school, or you're going to run into a bunch of scaffolding. A couple of our students in our early college program met with Representatives Lotnick and I last week through their membership in the United Way Youth Venture about, talking about new initiatives and programming that they wanted to put together, and I was actually really impressed how thorough their presentation was and what's, you know, their ideas, our way they'd like to see the city move forward in the future, so it's nice to see our students getting involved in that way. And just to echo what Mr. Schwartz said earlier, so early voting does start on October 19th. The early voting polling location is in Perry Auditorium, and then we'll break out to the five different locations for the wards on Election Day itself, but early voting will only be in Perry Auditorium or by mail, so don't go to the Elks and think that you can vote before Election Day. If you want to vote before Election Day for early voting, it's in Perry Auditorium, and then the five different wards will be at their regular spots on Election Day itself, and then voting by mail is already live, so you can do that now. The specimen ballots are posted in the City Hall hallway in front of the clerk's office. And that's all I have for this evening. There are no executive sessions this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, second by Attorney Pallavin to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. See you next month.